Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of January 19th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arius.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. At this time Pastor Tom Touchstone, who's the executive pastor from Valley Bible Fellowship, and also the host of the Encouraged Media Productions Internet Show Lunch Break, will offer the invocation. We're just so grateful for Valley Bible Fellowship, who regularly serves our community in September and in March. They have very focused events where they take thousands out into the community and serve. And then following the invocation, Emily Bell, who is a junior at BHS with a 4.5 GPA. You're a senior now, junior. She's going to lead us in the invocation. She was voted to be the president, and she served as the mayor's alternate last year. She's on the cross-country team, swim team, orchestra, Society of Women Engineers, Ecology Club, and the list goes on and on. And we're so proud of our young people who are willing to serve. Would you all stand, please?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor Go and the Honorable City Council. It's always a blessing to be here. It's a great thing to serve our city and able to start this off. So let's pray this. Father God, tonight, we ask God that your Spirit would guide and lead all the people that have just came to serve, that came to discuss. I pray, Lord, that as our city and our country and our county is needing comfort for the virus that is just overwhelming their medical community, our police community, give them grace and mercy. God, let us have steadfastness. Pray, God, tonight, wisdom would abound here. Pray, God, that you would continue to protect our first responders, continue to guide and lead the leaders of this city. I pray, Lord, that this tonight, Lord, there'll be some decisions made that will have everlasting impact for the future. I just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Tom.
Please stand, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you so much Pastor Tom. Thank you Emily. If you need to go study, Emily, go do that. Keep up your 4.5 GPA. So welcome, everyone. We're just so glad to have the public participation and civic engagement. Tonight, we have a city clerk who is going to be helping us for the first time, and it's never easy. This is a really, really hard job to keep all of this together. And so if things don't quite go as smoothly, we're going to give each other grace. And we're also going to be only in our second time with our new public comments, so we'll all flow together. But here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations. 4A, Proclamation to the Ford Dream Builders, Team Hope for Our Heroes, declaring Hope for Our Heroes Week in Bakersfield during the week of January 24th, 2022.
It is such a pleasure every year to have our Ford Dream Builders. These are the superstars of our community. They probably all have like a 10.100 GPA, right? But they are all engaged in school and community service, and it's always wonderful to have the support of Ford and these outstanding students. And so tonight, we have Team Hope for Our Heroes. And I just am so grateful for their support of our veterans. And I'm going to read you a proclamation tonight, and then we'll have some comments from one of the team leaders. Whereas veterans in our community have selflessly served our nation for our liberty and freedom, and whereas it is important for all veterans to be made aware of the resources available to them while educating members of our community on the needs of veterans, and whereas residents of Bakersfield and Kern County should commemorate military members both past and present who have served us all, and in so doing preserve the rights and security of all citizens, and whereas Ford Dream Builders, Team Hope for Our Heroes, work to create a resource guide for our hometown heroes to receive the benefits and support they and their families need. Now therefore, I Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim January 24th through 28th, 2020, as Hope for Our Heroes Week in our city, and call upon all citizens and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week by raising awareness of the needs of veterans and the availability of the Hope for Our Heroes Guide. And it's dated this day at Bakersfield, California, the 19th day of January 2022. It's my honor to be able to present this to our Ford Dream Builders. And would you like to come up, introduce the team, and receive this?
Thank you. My name is Dara Daru, and I am blessed to be a part of Ford Dream Builders and Hope for Our Heroes. When we were initially brainstorming our project, we desired to help homeless veterans. But after further discussion with community members, we discovered the need for a centralized source of veteran organizations and resources. Thus, Hope for Our Heroes was born. The past two weeks, we've been allowed to distribute our pamphlet throughout the city, and we also participated in the Honor Flight Breakfast, where we got to engage with veterans and see how our pamphlet has affected their lives. We heard from countless that when they came back from the service, they wish that they could have seen a resource guide like this to help them know who was here to support them in the community. Now my team members are Jennifer Morones, Sophia Zaninovich, Kevin Dewey, Crystal Flores, and Thomas Lehman. Thomas Lehman would like to finish with some closing words.
Good evening, council members. Us here at Hope for Our Heroes, Team the Garlic Company, and Ford Dimension just want to say a big thank you to everyone that has served in the nation, and especially the 40,000 veterans residing in Kern County. We recognize the large number of veterans in our community and the need for the resource guide that we have created, and we hope that through the proclamation from Mayor Go, we are able to help the veterans in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Let's give it up. Thank you.
Take a few. So one, two, three. Two, three. Two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All veterans, cool. Thank you, Ford Dream Builders. Really appreciate you, and now you're probably going to go and study all night. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, 4B, Proclamation to Dustin Contreras and Sandy Wu, co-directors of the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, declaring Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Bakersfield during January 2022.
Thank you. What a challenging topic we're dealing with tonight, but I am just so grateful for the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, for their diligent efforts to bring awareness in our community to the warning signs and ways to support our victims of human trafficking. It's my honor now to read this proclamation. Whereas human trafficking has become a modern-day version of slavery that exploits victims through coercion, and whereas human trafficking is the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprise generating $150 billion globally, using the internet and social media to target adults and youth as young as ages 11 through 14, and whereas victims are isolated and forced to hide the crime, and local citizens are largely aware of the trafficking taking place in their community, and whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Month highlights the plight of victims and encourages our citizens to support anti-trafficking professionals in their continued efforts to combat all forms of human trafficking in Kern County. Now therefore, I Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim January 2022, 2022, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in our city, and call upon all citizens to support the obliteration of this dreadful crime in our community and around the world. It's dated this day in Bakersfield, California, the 19th day of January 2022. It's my honor to present this to Dustin Contreras. Dustin, thank you so much for your efforts. It's just an honor to see you out in our community, leading this effort.
Thank you. Sandy Wu-Kater couldn't make it tonight, so I'll just say little things about her. So the coalition is now, will be coming on 10 years. It doesn't seem like it's been that long, but I actually went to my first meeting. I was a new detective at the sheriff's office, and they said, there's this new group out there that's going to combat human trafficking. My first thing was, what is human trafficking? So I tell you the leaps and bounds that we've come. That was December of 2012, and we are now with that tenure, seeing the fruition of what we kind of laid a foundation then. It, human trafficking unfortunately is still in Kern County. It is still a problem. As we scratch the surface and bring it up, it goes further down. We couldn't be here without the partners. I'm going to be quick about listing them real quick on who all comes to the table. We like to lay in the shadows, so to speak. We're behind the scenes. We do not come out and show our survivors and victims who come out there. It's their choice if they want to come out. We don't sensationalize anything, and that's kind of how we like to keep it. So it's kind of odd that we've been around 10 years. Some people have never heard of us. But if you're doing the work, you've been to our meetings, you've met our survivors, and thank you if you do help out. So quickly, Angelica Zuniga, who's our lived expert from Twilight Treasures, along with her partner, Griselda Moon, who has opened up a new shelter for victims and survivors of human trafficking called Redeemed Home. The Kern County District Attorney Cindy Zimmer, you guys were there during the press conference. You heard she has a prosecution task force now starting up dedicating to the prosecution of human trafficking traffickers and labor and sex trafficking. Sheriff Donnie Youngblood's been there from the beginning. Chief Greg Terry, and our newly-retired detective Brian West, who with the Bakersfield Police Department, came leaps and bounds in what they did with human trafficking and attacking it at the street level here in the city. Agent Veronica Pike with Homeland Security, Katrina Garcia with the probation department, and Dr. Angela Look and Macy Albertson with the CSEC, which handles human trafficking when it's an 18 or 18-years-or-younger-type victim, dealing with children. If you've heard, trafficking victims start usually into trafficking at about 11 to 12 years old is when they're introduced into a trafficking situation. Louis Gill, who was the CEO over at the Alliance, who we now welcome, Lauren Skidmore, who's there taking over. Carol B. Croft from the Women's Center High Desert. Carol B. Croft is one of the first to get the coalition started back in 2012. Someone came, wanted to start it in the city. There were some doors shut in their face, and she answered the call, and the coalition was born, along with a highway patrolman. Marie Perez, Marty Perez Dowling from the United Way of Kern, Cynthia Jamar and Tawana Johnson from the Canyon Hills Women's Ministry, Alicia Azaias from the Bakersfield City School District, and Jennifer Jensen with a Global Family, and many more that help us behind the scenes. This January, the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking commits to seeing an end to this abuse of human rights. We commit to providing trauma-informed and comprehensive services to support those exploited and help them heal from their experiences and regain lost freedoms. Together, we reaffirm President Lincoln's promise of freedom. Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude shall exist in the United States. I'm going to say thank you to Mayor, and thank you to the council for proclaiming this month Anti-Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is speaker cards.
The council adopted a resolution modifying the public statements portion of the agenda. That resolution separates public statements into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda, and there's a period for items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for the items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card. We ask that you mark whether you are here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during that portion of the meeting. Please give your completed card to the city clerk. This is a new process tonight, so we'll help each other and work through it together. If you're here on consent calendar hearing items 8A through C or public hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Hearing item 9A, the second public hearing regarding redistricting ward boundaries, will be heard after the presentations item at 6:00 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. Council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received eight speaker cards regarding items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And then at 6:00 PM, we will then stop wherever we are. We'll hear the redistricting item, and then we'll continue. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker? As a reminder, two minutes.
The first speaker is Gary Simmons on item 7C.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It's my pleasure to be here, and I do not have an outline. I do not have a script. I do not have a complaint. We do not have an argument. We don't have any conflict, which is rare. But I do want to take this moment of time to inform the city staff, the city council, the planning commission, that I live in an environment, a neighborhood, that's adjacent to the zone change to put a hospital rehabilitation center in, and I want the city staff and I want the council to know that our neighborhood group, the Stockdale Action Committee, is all in. The relationship that we built with the developer, with the investor, that's putting millions and millions of dollars into the city of Bakersfield, and to our knowledge is asking nothing in return for it. He is going to save millions, excuse me, hundreds of lives. We're in a pandemic. We always refer to it. This facility has taken too long to pass through. Our city environment, our government, however it all works, I'm not very good at it, but I want you to know that we are very, very happy with the development. We've had continuous dialogue and continuation with the investor, Mr. Lynch and his staff, for almost a two-year period of time. So the people that are in this audience are probably a little unaware of some of the subject, but we're very aware of it, and I'm sure that most of you are too. And I know that there is an anti-durruption issue or corruption issue here in the lobby, but I want to take the moment to ask the citizens of Bakersfield here to thank you, the city planning commission, the city council, and the city staff for their agreement and their passing this ordinance. I'd like you to stand for two seconds and say thank you.
Mr. Simmons, thank you very much. Your time is up. We appreciate your comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's very important that you know and understand we're all in. It's a win-win-win.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nick Hill for item 7E.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'd like to thank you for all that you've done throughout all the past times for the city. And right now, I'd like to ask anyone that's here in support of Michael Bowers to stand up, please. The reason why we're here tonight is that Michael Bowers is on the planning commission. There was supposed to be a vote tonight to remove Michael Bowers from the planning commission. We think that this is improper. I think that this should have been handled in a much better, much professional manner. He is an African-
Mr. Hill, I'm just going to ask you to stop just for one minute. We're having a technical issue with the timer. Are you able to do what you need to do on that? Sorry for the interruption.
It's okay.
And can you, do you have it? Go ahead.
Okay. Right now, I don't think that Mr. Bowers was given his due process to deal with this manner. I think that as an African-American that's holding a position, this is not the first time that this has happened. Right now, you leave everything open to ridicule, to a lot of questions as to why is he being publicly removed? My thing is this. Michael Bowers is owed a public apology. I received a phone call earlier today, and they told me that everything was straightened out. Number one, whether it is or whether it is not, that apology is not to be given to me. That public apology should be given to Mr. Michael Bowers. Because right now, it seems as though it's public persecution, and that just should not ever happen. That should not ever happen. I don't care if you're black, white, brown, blue, green, it doesn't matter. You know, if there's an issue, whether it's residency or anything, these matters should be handled in a more professional way. They should be handled behind closed doors, number one. You know, and if there's a question, I think that there should have been a hearing or proceeding for Mr. Bowers before there was just a vote or a request for a vote to remove him. So right now, I'm asking that you take that opportunity away.
Mr. Hill, you wrap up your comments. Your time is up.
Okay. Take that opportunity away for this vote tonight. Take that opportunity away, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Okay.
And now with it being 5:59, we will move on to the redistricting portion. There are very strict regulations regarding when we have to start that portion of the meeting. So we will continue and resume this portion of the meeting after we finish with the redistricting hearing. Madam Clerk, would you announce the next item, please?
9A, Public Hearing Regarding Redistricting Ward Boundaries will be heard at 6:00 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Tonight's hearing is to hear public comment on the draft redistricting map. We are devoting a total of 30 minutes tonight for speakers. That's two minutes per speaker. There will be additional opportunities to hear further from the public on the draft redistricting maps at a tentatively scheduled meeting on February 22nd, and you're always welcome to submit your written comments. It's 30 minutes total, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 30 minutes. We'll ask you to step to the mic, and at the conclusion of that 30-minute segment, at 29 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 30 minutes, a red light will flash, and that will conclude that portion of the meeting. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. So now, Mr. Clegg, would you like to introduce this, please?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This topic, as you're aware, comes up every 10 years, and we have held one hearing on this last calendar year. And we'll give a brief presentation tonight for the public record, and you can forgive us for moving fairly quickly through it, as you've seen it before, but we want to present this information for any in the public. This is a new topic, too. We'll be presenting a minimum change baseline map to the council tonight that would bring us within reasonable deviations of populations amongst the different wards. And really, this is a kickoff to then receive feedback from council and from the community. And for those reasons, we have a very brief presentation that we're going to through quickly, and then open the public hearing. And I'll turn the time over to Bryanna Carrier to provide that brief presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, Bryanna Carrier, Assistant to the City Manager, and I've been overseeing the city's redistricting process so far. So like Christian-
at 29 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 30 minutes, a red light will flash, and that will conclude that portion of the meeting. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. So now, Mr. Clegg, would you like to introduce us, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This topic, as you're aware, comes up every 10 years, and we have held one hearing on this last calendar year. And we'll give a brief presentation tonight for the public record, and you can forgive us for moving fairly quickly through it, as you've seen it before, but we want to present this information for any in the public. This is a new topic, too. We'll be presenting a minimum change baseline map to the council tonight that would bring us within reasonable deviations of populations amongst the different wards. And really, this is a kickoff to then receive feedback from council and from the community. And for those reasons, we have a very brief presentation that we're going to through quickly, and then open the public hearing. And I'll turn the time over to Brianna Carrier to provide that brief presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, Brianna Carrier, Assistant to the City Manager, and I've been overseeing the city's redistricting process so far. So like Christian said, we'll give you an overview here. We'll go over that first draft map that we're presenting, and then allow time for public feedback and council comment as well at the end, conclusion of the hearing. So just take a look at our overall timeline for the redistricting process. Like City Manager Clegg mentioned, we had our first public hearing here in the council chambers last calendar year. That was the first of the required hearings that we had. In between that time, we actually did onboard a consultant to help us with our demographic analysis and some technical assistance, and we are working with redistricting partners. So, redistricting partners did apply some technical assistance for a staff-led virtual workshop in December. That was online, and that was also to solicit additional communities of interest feedback. And we'll talk a little bit more about that here. Tonight, this is our second public hearing in the council chambers. This hearing and the remainder of the hearings will also take place here at times certain. So tonight, we started the hearing at 6:00 PM. We're introducing our draft map. Our third public hearing will be next month, February 23rd. And this hearing is actually going to focus, if not only, then mainly on the redistricting topic. So we will have dedicated a significant amount of time to redistricting next month, allowing some time for some public comment in between this meeting and the next. So please anticipate attending that one and getting your feedback in prior to that meeting time. Following next month's third public hearing, we'll have the fourth hearing on March 16th. At that point, we'll have a draft map that we will need to do a first reading on to adopt it into the municipal code by ordinance. The final meeting that we'll have, at least scheduled right now, is Wednesday, April 6th, and that'll be the fifth public hearing for a final vote on a map determination, second reading of that ordinance. All of this information, again, on our city's website, and I'll show you in a little bit where you can find that as well. So I'm gonna, again, just go over a very quick overview of what redistricting is and what some of our requirements are this year. So what is redistricting? Redistricting is the process of adjusting district lines every 10 years after the release of the U.S. Census. The well-known examples are congressional and state legislative districts, but local governments also must do redistricting. Beyond creating districts of equal population, redistricting also serves to empower local communities and preserve voting rights. I'll just make a quick note as well. The term "districting," here in the city, we use "ward." We use them somewhat interchangeably, but we mean the same thing. So here, criteria for adopting district boundaries, this is something that was new this iteration with the Fair Maps Act, that you should have your districts be geographically contiguous, that geographic integrity shall be respected in a manner that minimizes division, should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents, and shall be drawn to encourage geographical compactness. Another guideline that came through for Fair Maps Act was the introduction of communities of interest. And the purpose of this was to allow public comment period time for public input prior to the drafting of our first map. So we did have a significant amount of time in between our first hearing and the draft map. We have received some comments, but we'll go over a little bit what these communities of interest could be. So, they are essentially building blocks of districts. A community of interest includes ethnic and language minorities and other groups. They are meant to be subjective. They are meant to be open-ended, to be as inclusive as possible. Communities that are covered by the Voting Rights Act as communities of interest are Latinos, Asians, and African Americans. And the note at the bottom there, while communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. This is just an example list. This is not reflective of any input we've received so far. Just kind of get people thinking of what potentially could be a community of interest that you would want to identify within the city of Bakersfield limits. So things that kind of jump out here, maybe if there's a urban area, downtown area, schools own, school districts, certain neighborhoods, economic areas. Generally, the feedback that we've gotten is if you think that you are geographically confined and you have a common interest, you are likely a community of interest. We would like to know that. So that is what we'd be collecting throughout the process. What is not a community of interest? The Fair Maps Act explicitly prohibits these groups from being considered as communities of interest, those with a political party affiliation, any incumbents, or any potential political candidate. It's also hard in redistricting to try and put a group together that is not geographically defined. So if it's something like, I've heard the example of fans of a sports team. You know, if they're not in one area and you can't really draw a line around them, you can't, they're too watered down, that's not a community of interest. Okay. So that was it for the review for right now. What I'm showing you here is the current ward boundary lines with our 2020 data inserted in them. So this was part of our community workshop we did online as well. I believe this has been out there for a little while. Our current deviation, if we were to keep our boundary lines as they are, would be 17.2%, which is well above an allowable range. So we will be seeing some change in our boundary lines. And just to explain quickly, the way the deviation is calculated is essentially the absolute value, the greatest absolute value of any highest and lowest wards that we see here. Currently, the way the wards are drawn, Ward 2 has the lowest deviation, so we have a very wide swing in population for Ward 2, which needs to grow, and also Ward 3, which currently has the highest deviation, the most populous of the current ward boundaries. I'm gonna pause here to just remind again that a lot of this, all of this information can be found on the city's redistricting website. This is housed under the city clerk's webpage. So if you go to department's webpage, city clerk, you will find ward redistricting. So if any comments come in, as in between now and throughout the process, we can take those at any time. It does not have to be verbally. There are many ways to do that on the website here as well. So what I actually have here now is the first draft of our baseline map that we're starting with. It's a little bit hard to see, but we'll go through ward by ward, so you can see any changes. And to explain this version of the map here, the colors are the current ward areas. The lines are the proposed areas. So what you'll see is that green area has a little bit of that brownish color in it. That means that that ward area is actually subsuming some of Ward 3. And we'll go through it, but this is just to help you compare. This is with color coding to the current ward boundaries, and this would be the proposed ward boundaries, draft map A. Okay. That chart at the bottom is very hard to see. I'll go through just numbers-wise what we're looking at as far as these different wards. But starting with Ward 1, proposed population would be 54,962, with a deviation negative 5%. There is also a piece of Ward 1 that does go into Ward 2 that's bordered, I believe, by Chester Avenue and P Street from 58 to north to California. So that is a rectangular residential area that is currently proposed to be part of Ward 2. Ward 2, proposed population would be 55,396, proposed deviation of negative 4.3%. And you can see a little bit closer, sort of in the lower right-hand corner, the area that is added to Ward 2. Ward 3, proposed population 56,138, proposed deviation negative 3%. Ward 3 will also see some changes. It's a little easier to see when we look at Ward 4. Taking a look at Ward 4, proposed population 59,783, deviation 3.3%. And this is where you can see that this brown area was previously all of Ward 3. Anything north of Norris Road, with the cutoff being north-south on Callaway, would actually become part of Ward 4. Ward 5, proposed population 60,249, deviation 4.1%. Ward 6, proposed population 60,890, proposed deviation 5.2%. And then Ward 7, proposed population 57,743, proposed pop, or deviation negative 0.2%. So that is the chart that I was just reading off of, just to save my eyesight a little bit. But this, again, is all available on our website, online as well. And at this point, I don't have anything else in the presentation. We can open to public comment or any further staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We can entertain some questions at this point in time, but if council would prefer to have questions after the public hearing, we're prepared to answer them at that time.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. So we have two minutes each on this. Thank you, Ms. Carrier. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Eliana Honeycutt, and I wanted to go in a little bit on Ward 3 in your proposed map, and I wanted to show that Ward 3 is a textbook. Actually, I shared some slides with y'all, so please feel free to follow along. It is a packet of about five slides. So, Ward 3 is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering. And if you can see Slide 1 of your current and proposed maps, there's a 112-foot strip of land that connects northwest Bakersfield, Norris, and Fruitvale to east Bakersfield. And it's clear this 112-foot itsness is blatant, which sole purpose is to benefit the incumbent that dis, the incumbent in that district, in Ward 3, Ken Weir, by disenfranchising the communities of color sandwiched between Fruitvale and City in the Hills. If you follow along to Slide 2, you can see that this is made even more obvious by the extensive use of zero-population areas that allow the larger populations to be connected, mostly oil and riparian areas. There's really no community of interest that explains this configuration. Slide 3 shows that furthermore, population hotspot cluster analysis shows that low-population concentration clusters are located near the Kern River riparian and Fruitvale oil field. Four and five slides show that non-Latino white population is concentrated in Norris, Fruitvale, in the west portion, west portion population center of Ward 3. Now, this is essentially resulting in the disenfranchisement of the east Bakersfield Latino population by the greater voter strength of the non-Latino white population in the far west portion of Ward 3, which, according to your own slides, are communities of, covered by the Voting Rights District. And according to your own slides, the number-two ranked criteria is to also minimize division. Since it's clear that Ward 3 is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering, we really implore that this board adhere to the best practices formalized under the California Fair Maps Act and, of course--
Thank you. Your time is up.
--the Voting Rights Act. Thank you for letting me go a little overtime.
Thank you, and thank you for the handout. It's a lot easier to follow that way.
I know better than to talk when papers are being passed out.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Lori Pisante, and I am the Director of Civic Engagement and Government Relations for the Deloris Huerta Foundation. And you were doing so well. I brought my mason jar. I had my big rocks for all your Voting Rights Act districts. And then I see a slide that basically tries to tell the world that constitutionally-protected classes are Latinos, are Asian-Americans, are African-Americans, that that's the same thing as those other communities of interest. No, 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 no. No. The city of Bakersfield proposed map currently not only does everything that Eliana just said in District 3, but it totally splits our Punjabi community between Ward 6 and 7. It splits our Black community between four wards. We haven't had a Black council member since 2010, right? And when we're looking at that map that you currently have, it seems to be the case that you were probably out of compliance back then, too. You cannot keep the same map, right? Now, you have options. We have proposed a map on behalf of the Current Equitable Map Coalition. It draws what you need to have, which is three Voting Rights Act districts. Currently, you only have two, and your proposed map only draws two. You have to have at least three. You have to. And the map that we've proposed doesn't have to be the one you accept, but it absolutely draws what you need to do. You need to keep our Punjabi community whole. You need to keep our Black communities whole. You need to empower our constitutionally-protected classes, and you have to draw those Voting Rights Act districts. It is the case that when you have an opportunity to analyze it, and your consultant has opportunity to analyze it, you'll get to see the numbers on it, but the PDF that I sent on email, you're more than welcome to zoom in and zoom out and see all the street names. And anybody who wants to come learn about our proposed map, I got copies for everybody in the audience, and you can join us next Wednesday night, and everybody's welcome to come learn about redistricting with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisante. Who else would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll, is there someone I'm missing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and now return it to council for comment. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to speak at this time? I don't see any requests. Okay, well, Mr. Clegg, do you wish to say something?
No, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify, but absent any further questions, there's no further staff comment.
Thank you. We have one more request to speak from Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clegg, I'm just reviewing the Equitable Maps Coalition maps. Did we receive population counts from the coalition?
Councilmember Gonzalez, I have not had the opportunity to review those materials.
Okay.
And so we can follow up on that question.
All right. That'll be helpful for the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Colleagues, any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we will now go back to our public speakers, and we'll continue from where we were. We'll just give you a minute to reset your clock as you need to do that. Thank you. So we are now continuing with public speakers on items that are listed on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call the next public speaker, please?
Patrick Jackson regarding item 7E.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Patrick Jackson, President of the NAACP here in Bakersfield. Thank you, Madam Mayor, go. Councilmembers, I'm here on tonight, not on great terms on this evening, but to support Michael Bowers. As Nick Hill had stated earlier, him being on this planning commission is very important to our community, and the way that it had come about, very disheartening, especially with many of us being together just a couple of days ago, MLK Day. Isn't it just a coincidence that we're talking about uniting, being together, being one, trying to move forward, and trying to circumvent the system of trying to get rid of African-American representatives that have done a great job in representing the community of Bakersfield, and also is an inspiration to many in our community? And so when this has come about, and we were given word that this was happening, it was very disheartening. I was very dismayed and upset that this type of action was on the agenda, and now his character is being questioned. Many of the colleagues are trying to figure out what exactly happened for his name to be put up for removal. And so we definitely ask that you do not take any action on this, but furthermore, look into, is our hearts in the right place of wanting unity for communities of color, especially the African-American community? Is our hearts in the right place? Do we have the correct leaders in position that truly believes in a united Bakersfield of this sound of something better? Of this sound of something better? That that sound of something better really include the African-American community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Next speaker, please.
Dee Slade.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and to the councilmembers and staff. I'm here a second time around. I'm revisiting what happened to the very first woman African-American councilmember, Ms. Irma Carson. The same thing that we're dealing with with the second African-American male, Michael Bowers, City Planning Commissioner. I'm going to echo what's been said. This should have been handled behind closed doors. Investigations, we're for. Coming up with the right answer, we're for that. But handling it this way, it looks like defamation of character. And I know that some of you come out of the business sector that was elected. I've been around a long time. Some of you have investments. Some of you are in construction. Some of you are doing all sorts of things prior to taking that oath. So, you don't drop everything. You keep it. You retain it. Some things look like they're not. Might be a conflict of interest. Maybe you're fundraising. Maybe you're doing whatever. We, the voters, don't say anything because we feel we elected the best, suitable individuals to lead us in our various wards. Now, I may not be in your ward, but I certainly influence people within your ward-- family members, friends, church, et cetera. So, to be very short, I have a letter. I'm going to leave it for you. You can have copies. And I want you to remember: respect, self-respect, respect to your voters. I believe the city manager was appointed by you. I believe your attorney-- correct me-- everyone was appointed by the city council. And the voters elect you to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slade. Next speaker, please.
Teresa Goldner.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Go-- good evening, Mayor Go, and members of the council. It's really an honor and a privilege to be here. I am here as an attorney on behalf of Michael Bowers. I'm with the law firm of Clindin Italian-Goldner. I have submitted a letter for each of you. I emailed it to the court-- the city clerk yesterday. I hope that you all have copies. I have extra copies here in case you don't have them. Here are hard copies if you'd like to hand them out, Madam Clerk. And I want to thank Ms. Reza. She's been terrific in helping me to understand the new procedure for coming to a city council meeting. So, let's talk about what really happened here. Mr. Bowers received a communication from Councilman Arias, wanting to know about his residence. Mr. Bowers responded to that and explained it to Mr. Arias. Radio silence until January the 12th, when suddenly, Mr. Bowers got an emailed correspondence from the city attorney, and a copy of that is attached to the letter that I sent yesterday that is in front of you now. And you can see, it raises his residency as an issue. It also reminds him that he serves at the pleasure of the board. But most troublingly, it asked him to resign within less than 48 hours, by noon on Friday, two days after he got that letter. Bottom line is, he has not done anything wrong. He has not violated any ordinance. He has not changed his residence. He has served with integrity, intelligence, and energy from the moment that he has been on the planning commission. He has been there for three years out of a four-year term. He does not deserve to be treated this way. He deserves to stay on the city council. And I was really appalled when I got here today and I saw that a member of Supervisor Perez's staff intends to speak today, trying to get you to come up with some kind of a compromise. The only kind of a compromise-- there should be no compromise-- other than, I request that--
Thank you, Ms. Goldner.
--your board deny this motion outright, refuse this request. And I respectfully request that Councilman Arias restore Mr. Bowers' reputation in the community and in the public by apologizing to him because he deserves an apology--
Thank you, Ms. Goldner.
--with the way that he has been treated. Thank you for allowing me to go over my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Traco Matthews regarding item 7E.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff. I don't have a prepared speech because I actually just found out today and was shocked and stunned to hear that there was a resolution to remove a community-- a great community leader, but also a personal friend of mine from the planning commission. One of the things that I wanted to point out because everyone has already so eloquently spoken to many reasons why Michael Bowers should remain in his planning commission seat. But when you look at those maps, too, Ward 1 is the ward where African-Americans have the greatest political power. Now, we're a strong minority in every ward, so we will never be a majority or have much voice relative to other groups. We have 19%, approximately 20 based on those maps. It is appropriate that we should have some representation, some voice, with some war, somewhere. And we don't have any other African-Americans on the planning commission or in elected positions anywhere else. Michael Bowers is a son of Ward 1. I think most of you know his history because you heard it at the MLK Breakfast the other day. He went to Bessie Owens, right down the street from his home, Emerson Junior High School. He's a driller for life, like I'm sure some of you probably are. But the hand of God has been upon his life, allowing him to move from the streets of Cottonwood to the halls of Congress. I think it is inappropriate and a mistake to even consider removing him from the planning commission with everything that we have just said. We deserve a voice. Michael Bowers is someone who we are proud to represent. So, I'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next speaker, please.
Sammy Wells regarding item 7E.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Board. I hope everyone is doing well as the new year has come to a start. My name is Sammy Wells, and I'm the President of Kern County's Turning Point USA. We're a student-based organization that focuses on activism and engagement with our community leaders. The reason I came to speak before you is to address my concerns with a certain action by a sitting council member. That action is the removal of Michael Bowers from the planning commission. Not only is that an open power grab, this is unethical as Michael Bowers' term is coming to an end in just a few short weeks. This is important to me because Michael Bowers is a champion for Kern County youth and especially young Black people here-- young Black men in our community, young Black children in our community. I grew up right off of Cottonwood and Plains, just as Michael Bowers did. He truly understands the struggles that young Black men like myself face on a daily basis. His removal is an open testament that African-American voices in our community can be shut down in a heartbeat. His removal is wrong. This past weekend, Michael Bowers was the keynote speaker at the MLK Breakfast, as you guys saw in the Baker South Californian. He voiced his vision for a successful Black future, and that voice must be heard. I pressure all sitting councilmembers to allow Michael Bowers to rule out his term, which only ends in just a few short weeks. Why remove him? He has invested significantly into our youth. He is an inspiration for me and hundreds of other young Black children here in our community. Michael came from a neighborhood that was riddled with drugs and crime and made something of himself. Not only did he pursue his dreams, he was humble enough to remember his roots and invest into our community's future, which is us, the youth. I'm only 16, so it means a lot to me. Do not remove him. This is a power grab. Thank you all. Thank you, Karen. I love your job. You're doing a great job as mayor. Thank you so much, and God bless you. Why'd you do it?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Next speaker, please.
Kevin Oliver regarding item 7E.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, council. I'm County Commissioner Kevin Oliver. I'm the Vice President of the County Civil Service. I also sit on the city civil service as well as a real estate broker and business owner here in town. I've known a lot of you a long time-- Patty Gray for years as I was a partner with her son in business-- as well as Eric Arias. And I just graduated from Bakersfield Leaders Academy this year, so we know each other very well. I'd like for you to speak on behalf of Michael Bowers as one of our Black community leaders. Now, he's-- and I laugh a lot of times because Michael and I have a lot of disagreements in a lot of ways as we sit on two different sides of the aisle. But as a young conservative in this, in our community here, we need strong Black leaders. And I think that what we're doing here-- and I sit and I hear a lot of employment law things as the city attorney is well aware, and our county council is well aware-- I think what we're doing is the wrong thing or at least the wrong direction that we're doing here. I would like to request that you please reconsider the direction that we're moving in regards to and taking this off the agenda or do no action this evening. I've known Michael as a business leader, a friend, and a colleague, though we have not agreed all the time. Again, please reconsider, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Madam Clerk, are there any additional speakers on an item listed on the agenda? Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor Go, we have five speaker cards regarding items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Go ahead and call them.
First speaker is Patrick Jackson regarding planning commission.
He doesn't wish to speak. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Teresa Goldner on planning commission.
I'm here--
Welcome.
--I checked the box to speak to you for planning commission as a non-agenda item because I had heard a lot of talk that you were going to remove this matter-- remove the matter 7E from the agenda. Since you did not remove it from the agenda, there's no need for me to now talk on the non-agenda item. But I appreciate the opportunity, Deputy Clerk Reza, for doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goldner. Next speaker, please. So, the clerk says we have no further speakers. And so, now we'll move on to the next-- Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more. Did you fill out a card, sir?
Apologies, Council Honorable Councilmember. I did fill a card out for an item listed on the agenda. That wasn't called. I submitted--
For 8A?
Correct.
Okay. That's a consent calendar public hearing.
That will be called later.
Apologies.
All right, Madam Clerk. Next item. No problem at all, sir. It's very confusing sometimes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is consent calendar items, 7A through 7AN for approval. We have received staff memorandums of removing an item from the agenda. It's 7D. We've also received a resolution for 7E and a blue memo for 7O.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, I didn't quite understand what you just said. Could you repeat that again, please?
That we received three blue memos.
Okay.
Item 7E, we have a blue memo.
Okay.
7D, blue memo.
Okay.
And 7O.
Okay, all of those have blue memos?
All three have blue memos. 7D is asking for it to be removed.
7D is being removed.
Okay, 7D is being removed?
That's what they're requesting-- to be considered and scheduled for a future meeting.
Okay. So, I do have one agenda item by Councilmember Gonzalez, 7C. And I wish to pull item 7E. And with that, I make a motion to approve items 7A through 7AN with the exception of 7C, 7E, and 7D.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now, we'll have item 7C. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And thank you, Vice Mayor Weir, for pulling this item on my behalf. You know, this is regarding the transitional care facility in Ward 2 on the corner of Stockdale and Coffee Road. It's an important item for me because it's a personal one. As some of you know, in 2012, my father woke up in the morning and lost all movement in his legs. And by lunchtime, he lost movement in his arms. And then, by dinnertime, he was placed on a ventilator at Mercy Downtown. And he remained on a ventilator for three and a half years before he passed away. And while he was on-- in the ICU for five weeks, we began discharge planning, and we were looking for were looking for a subacute facility that provided ventilator support and long-term care. And my mother and I went all over, literally all over California, trying to find a subacute bed. There were no beds available in Bakersfield, no hospital that provided long-term subacute support. We finally found a bed in Visalia and we begged for admission for him. He was there for a minute and then we moved him to Delano. He was there for a year. And then finally a facility opened up in Bakersfield and we had him there for a year and a half. And then the facility closed due to CMS regulations. He then moved to Culver City in a hospital there. And the distance was just too far for him psychologically and emotionally. And one night we got a call that he had passed away in his sleep. And I've always felt very passionately about the need for more subacute facilities. I've had many conversations with healthcare providers and leaders in our community about more support for families who are going through these types of cases and these types of situations. It's devastating for families who experience this. And this is a huge blessing for our community that we'll have a subacute facility here with speech and language therapy, physical and occupational therapy, ventilator care, and help people rehabilitate. And hopefully they have a better chance of and a better outcome than my dad did. So, it's with that that I want to make the motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now item 7E, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bowers, I do want you to know we have received your letter of resignation. And with the adoption of this item tonight, we accept your resignation effective April 8th. I do want to make a few item changes on the resolution. So, the fourth whereas, I would like that to read Councilmember Arias. Ward 1, would like to appoint a planning commissioner of his own choice and. On whereas number 6, whereas given Councilmember Arias' desire to appoint a planning commissioner of his choice, it is appropriate for the city council to accept Mr. Bowers' resignation from the planning commission effective April 8, 2022, and direct the clerk's office to open recruitment for a replacement planning commission. Now, therefore, item 2. Item 2 should read accepts Michael Bowers' resignation from the Bakersfield Planning Commission effective April 8, 2022. And with that, I move approval.
I don't see any requests to speak. You have a motion?
I have a request.
Oh, you have a request, it hasn't come in yet. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. So, I received the letter from Ms. Goldner, but I wasn't sure I received a copy of the resignation letter. Is there a copy available?
Mayor, Councilman Gonzalez, that is the resignation letter that the council is considering to be the resignation of Mr. Bowers effective April 8th.
Ms. Goldner, was that the intent of the letter?
Councilmember Arias and members of the council, no. My letter was intended to tell you that he will present a letter of resignation on April 7th, 2022. But my letter was not intended to constitute his letter of resignation. What we're respectfully requesting the motion be tonight would be to deny the request to remove him as a city planning commissioner. On April 7th, he will submit a letter of resignation. And we respectfully request that you allow him to honor what he is telling you and to know that he will submit a letter of resignation on April the 7th. And in the meantime, he can be allowed to continue to be a fully engaged planning commissioner on behalf of the city of Bakersfield. But to clarify the record, my letter to you was not intended to and does not constitute a letter of resignation on Mr. Bowers' behalf, but simply to tell you that he will resign on April 7th, 2022. So, I would respectfully request that Mr. Weir's motion be amended to or be withdrawn and that it simply, that you simply deny the motion or deny this request to remove him from the planning commission. He will resign on April 7th when his house, when his remodel is done and he moves into his new house. And he's telling you that and we've put that in writing. And we respectfully request that you honor his statement to you. And he will submit a letter of resignation accordingly pursuant to the rules applicable to these matters. Does that answer your question?
That was my question, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. If anyone else has any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. We have absolute transparency in this matter, so we have nothing to hide and we're here to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Goldner. Vice Mayor. Are we finished? Councilmember Gonzalez?
I just wanted to make one quick comment if I may, Mayor. And that is, I've known Mr. Bowers since junior high school. And he and I have worked in the community for years, side by side on various different initiatives, supporting African-American entrepreneurs and new businesses and cleanup projects and food distributions. I mean, the list goes on and on over the years. And I have the utmost respect for him and his leadership and community leadership in the community. And I just wanted the public to know where I stand on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor.
Madam City Attorney, are we prohibiting Mr. Bauer to perform his duties and be an active member of the planning commission? Are we prohibiting any of that? Or are we just saying we're going to accept a letter of resignation and it's effective April 8th?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you are not prohibiting Mr. Bowers from acting as a planning commissioner from now until April 8th. As for your latter question, I think we need to have some clarity as to whether, in light of Ms. Goldner's statement, that we do not have a resignation from Mr. Bowers as of this minute, whether or not, how you want to word that resolution. If you want to simply come back on April the 8th, as Ms. Goldner has suggested, or whether or not you want to word the resolution so that, in light of everything that has transpired and the letter, that you are going to consider the letter, the resignation and removal of Mr. Bowers effective on April the 8th. It's, again, council's prerogative. Regardless of the decision you make, Mr. Bowers remains a planning commissioner up and through April the 8th of this year.
Okay, will other councilmembers speak?
Councilmember Smith.
My feeling is, is we should not approve what is on the agenda or the revised motion because that is not what Mr. Bowers wants. Mr. Bowers has served with integrity. And for whatever reasons, miscommunication or, you know, he was going to move, he didn't move, he is the planning commissioner. And we should wait for his resignation. That's my position, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would say this has become a much bigger issue probably than what it should have been. And it's been very confusing, to be honest with you, especially for someone as myself that has just gotten involved in the governmental system. But I would agree with the council that we do deny the motion to request the removal of Michael Bowers and accept his resignation on April the 7th and to take his word for what it is because of the integrity of the man. In the meantime, though, I think that we should be included in that, that we should be able to open up application. I don't know if by law we can do that. I'm asking for counsel over here so that the person of Councilmember Arias, his choice that can go right into that position of planning commissioner. And so that would be my motion, that we deny the motion to request the removal of, I understand, reputation is everything. So, that would be, that would be what I would want to offer.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Patty Gray. I think.
I'm not sure if I did or not. Excuse me, Mayor. Councilmember Arias.
Is there a question, Councilmember Gray?
Well, again, I'm new at this. So, yes, I believe I made a motion. Vice Mayor's asking me, so please help me out over there at the other side of the room. I'm very transparent, parent people, I can tell you that right now.
Mayor, Councilmember Gray, I did consider your words to be a motion. Your motion is last, which means it goes first. And I understand you to have denied the motion to remove and/or accept Mr. Bowers' resignation, whether it is or it isn't, but to open the application process. That's how I understand your motion.
I agree.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. So, we'll hear from Councilmember Arias before we vote. Councilmember Arias?
Yep. With that, I just want to say that I support Councilwoman Gray's motion.
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, you have a motion?
I.
Oh, do you want to speak? This is not working?
No.
Oh, you don't want to speak?
No, I don't want to speak. I actually can't vote.
Oh, we need some help, technology, we can't vote. There's several people, I think, who are having some technology issues here. And if we can't resolve that, we'll just do a real call vote.
Just want to clear this one and then read to a voting board?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll just click against on it, clear it, and then we'll open another one. So, confirm that one?
Confirm it?
Yes, because we're going to ignore that one and then we're going to do the last motion first.
Does anyone else need some help? Thank you all. Technology is wonderful when it works. Occasionally, it has its challenges. Is there anyone else who is unable to vote? Ready? All right, we are ready now, councilmembers. There's a motion, please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please. Actually, we'll give you an opportunity to leave, for those of you who need to leave. Thank you so much for your patience. And thank you for your participation, too.
Next item is consent calendar public hearings, 8A through 8C.
Thank you. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from the portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So, at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A through C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove that matter from the consent calendar hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jordan Sisson. I'm requesting on behalf of my client, item 8A, to be removed for public comment. That is the general plan amendment and zone change for the Hagman Road property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to have an item removed? Seeing none, does any councilmember wish to remove an item from consent calendar hearings? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 8C.
8C, okay. Any other councilmembers? So, at this time, the consent calendar public hearing items 8B is closed. Vice Mayor?
Motion for staff's approval.
It's getting late.
Moving staff's recommendation.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. So, typically, this would go after the hearing items. We've already considered hearing item number nine. So, at this point, I will open the public hearing item for item 8A. Unless, city manager, do you have any comments?
Mayor, I think we can hear comments and then be prepared to respond to questions.
Thank you. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Point of clarity, how much time will be allotted, given it's one public speaker? I'd maybe indulge for three minutes, I'll be very quick.
Sure.
Thank you so much. So, again, this is for item 8A. My name is Jordan Sisson, I'm a CEQA attorney. I'm here on behalf of the Drury Laurie Law Firm, as well as their client, Safer. In short, we ask you to stay the proposed action, which is a general plan amendment and zone change, until a CEQA compliant EIR is actually prepared for this action. I would like to make clear that this is not merely an action to conform the general plan and zoning designation for this property. It is the first step of an industrial park that can provide up to over a half a million square feet of warehouse spaces and logistics-serving uses. This is not just merely a downzoning. Be very clear, this is a different project that was never reviewed in 2020 in M&amp;D with a more recent addendum. This is all really made very clear in our comments submitted earlier today. Hard copies have been provided. It's very lengthy, so I'll try to get to the five quick points. There's a lot of appendices to it, so my apologies. But we want to make sure you had all the stuff before you. But if I can, I just want to make five real quick points that I hope you consider tonight. First, the developers' council, Rutan Tucker, submitted a letter earlier, a few weeks ago in response to our arguments. One of the arguments is that our comments don't matter because it's made by a union. I want to be very clear that my client, Safer, is an independent nonprofit. And moreover, courts have made clear that unions do have standing. So, those sort of ad hominem attacks do not have legal significance. My second point is that they argue that we were supposed to appeal a 2020 M&amp;D. But we're talking about the addendum today, so that argument really doesn't fly. The third point I would like to make is that they claim that this is a substantial evidence test, when in fact, it is a fair argument standard, which is a much lower threshold. The case that they cite as a Superior Court case from San Mateo that makes clear that the fair argument standard applies here. Fourth point I'd like to make is that they say that even under the fair argument standard, we still lose because we didn't submit expert evidence. Before you are two expert letters regarding air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, mobile emissions, VMTs, which are vehicle miles traveled, obviously dealing with mobile emissions, and biological. Under the fair argument standard, there's two experts that disagree, you need to do an EIR. That's pretty clear. My last point is that the Rutan Tucker letter and the M&amp;D does not provide any evidence about a health risk assessment and the air quality during the construction. Only our expert provides any comments on this, unrebutted. So, that means before you, the only evidence you have says it's a significant impact, which means an EIR is required. Sum up, this project is not just a simple reconform the site. It is the first step of leading to a logistic, a potential logistics warehouse project that can have significant more, significantly more mobile emissions. It has not been analyzed in any of these documents. We respectfully urge you to stay your action, do the analysis, look at the impacts, mitigate them, and then proceed. But as of right now, before the record you have, you cannot. And I apologize and thank you for indulging me for the extra time. Thank you so much, Honorable Counsel.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on 8A from the audience? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on 8A from the audience?
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I think just out of an abundance of caution, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? I believe Mr. Goldner is here in support of staff's recommendation.
Oh, I am sorry. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? You are exactly right, City Attorney. That's why we have you. All right, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Barry Goldner. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Hagman Properties. The subject property is currently zoned M3 and M2. And what's before you would result in the M3 being M2. And it's in an area that has a lot of traffic. And I don't know that we want the type of M3 uses in the area, and M2 would be much more desirable. The attorney that just appeared in front of you is responding to a letter that was submitted to the city on January 7. Counsel for the objector has basically laid at your feet, at the time of the hearing, a stack of paper. It has not been provided to city staff. It has not been provided to my client or to counsel. This is trial by ambush. And what is before you is a cleanup amendment that would simply make the property's land use designation and zoning consistent with development already permitted by a previously approved vesting tentative tract map in December 2020. This project is a paper change. It would not result in any new or increased significant impacts not already analyzed in the mitigated negative declaration, which was adopted in December along with the vesting tentative tract map. Up until trial by ambush this evening, which we object to, the commenter had not submitted any actual evidence otherwise, just pure speculation, which falls well short of the required substantial evidence. The only actual evidence in the record, including the air quality analysis attached to the Rutan letter dated January 7, and the city staff's expert analysis, demonstrates that the project will not result in any significant impacts on the environment. Contrary to what you've been told in the trial by ambush launched by Counsel for the objector is that an EIR is required. It is not. This is a very simple change. It's been recommended by city staff, and we humbly request that the City Council approve item 8A in the general plan amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Goldner. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation on this item? Seeing none, now there's an opportunity for a five-minute rebuttal for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation.
Evening again, Jordan Sisson for Safer. It'll be very quick in response to my very diligent counsel's remarks. At the end of the day, we do not control the agenda and how information gets provided to the public. As was mentioned, just January 7, there was a response. That required, that was less than two weeks ago. It requires time and energy to get experts to provide that information, to do the analysis. This is largely controlled by the developer, who can continue hearings, who can have more time to provide more evidence. Unfortunately, my clients and my position were not offered that same luxury. And so we're always with our backs against the wall, trying to respond to tighter deadlines. I apologize for the voluminous pages, but in large part, they're appendices. They are data that are part of the appendices. I'm more than happy to trade information with the opposing counsel, so we can have an exchange of that information. It was emailed earlier today, but again, we apologize for the late delay. It's not an ambush by design. This is the nature of not being able to control the agenda of the city's agenda, or when information is provided by the applicant to the public. So I apologize for that. And with that, I'd submit.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? We have a few more minutes left, and then we'll have an opportunity for support. Seeing none, is there anyone now who would like to speak, up to five minutes, in support?
I think counsel wants me to validate his parking. I'm not sure why he had it like that. I don't mean to be disrespectful to counsel, but I'm quite certain they have email. If they thought there was any validity to their experts' reports, they would have been very happy to send those to us to tell us that we have a problem. This is a last-minute play, and you should treat it as such and proceed with approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldner. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to counsel for comment and action. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking for some comments from staff at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ask Chris Boyle, our Development Services Director, to speak to this item.
General Plan Amendment Rezone before you tonight is supportive of a tentative map that was prepared by the property owner to subdivide this property into a small industrial-type parcels, generally speaking, one- to-two-acre parcels that would provide storage yards and things like that for lay-down yards, equipment storage and the like for industrial tenants. That said, there isn't really an opportunity for a large warehouse or what have you, as proposed by the opponent, in that the environmental work, the general plan amendment, rezone, are all in support of the tentative map. The staff would continue to support the analysis that's presented before you and recommend approval. If I could add one other additional item?
I wish you would.
Okay. Before you tonight is a general plan cycle. And typically, it's taken all as one. If the applicant wished to have an opportunity to speak to that matter, two things could occur. The council could refer this to staff, two things aside from an action to approve. You could refer the matter back to staff, and this item would then have to be scheduled to be heard at the next general plan cycle. As an alternative, you could continue all of the items here, such that the action formally would occur, for this cycle, would formally occur at the next general plan, next, pardon me, next council meeting. In light of the applicant's comments, staff would recommend taking action tonight, along with the other two items that are before you.
I would just like to offer clarification on the Development Services Director's comment. You don't have to physically continue the rest of the items. Mr. Goldner would like a continuance to respond in writing to the last-minute document drop. The council historically has allowed the applicant an opportunity to do that. Even though we're in a general plan cycle, if you were to approve the other general plans on your council agenda tonight, the mayor would simply withhold her signature until two weeks from tonight, and that still falls well legally within the general plan cycle. So I'm not sure, Vice Mayor, if you want to ask Mr. Goldner if he feels it would behoove him to get the two-week continuance in order to respond to the last-minute document drop, or again, Vice Mayor, if you're comfortable in moving ahead with a vote tonight in light of what Mr. Boyle has indicated to you.
Mr. Goldner?
So I was, I'm a special guest here this evening on behalf of my client and the environmental attorneys. So I have a question for Ms. Gennaro, which is, based on what you've outlined, would the matter be approved tonight, and we would still have an opportunity to respond in writing within the two weeks, and then the matter would be completed?
With the mayor's approval? Mr. Goldner, I don't know how the council is going to vote, but assuming they were to vote the approval tonight, no, you would not have an opportunity, whatever you would provide, the city in writing would not be part of the administrative record. So if you wanted something to be a part in writing for the administrative record, we would have to ask the council to continue this matter for two weeks until the next meeting, which I believe is February the 2. And you may feel, you may feel that the documents provided by the opponent are simply duplicative of what has been previously provided, and that there's no need for a continuance. It's really, as Mr. Boyle indicated, your call as to whether or not you feel the record needs to be protected.
My primary concern would be not having any further delays beyond the two weeks. And so in my discussion earlier with Mr. Boyle, I want to make sure that we're not going to be delayed into another general plan amendment cycle.
Again, with the permission of the mayor, I don't think that that's staff's recommendation. Again, I haven't heard from the council. I don't believe that that's where they're leaning. The hearing is closed tonight, and it would simply be returning back to the council for action at the next meeting. But again, you may want to let the Vice Mayor continue with his thoughts, because they're ultimately the one that casts the vote.
My thought is, right now, that we continue this till the next meeting in, you know, the first meeting in February, and come back and have a response, and then approve it at that point.
And again, my understanding with the Vice Mayor's comment is that the hearing is closed, that it's already been closed from the mayor. There will be no further comment from the public allowed. It will only allow you, Mr. Goldner, to respond to the document drop, and the council will then vote on February the 2.
That sounds like an excellent approach. So the hearing would be closed, and we would respond in writing, and the matter would then be voted upon at the February 7 meeting. February 2, all right. I thought you were seconding my motion. I wasn't sure. Okay. That sounds like an excellent suggestion, and I think if we could close the matter and then come back on the 2nd, it would provide us with an opportunity to respond to the document dump.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goldner.
That was my motion, so.
And so, at this point, I will close the public hearing. And you have a motion? Please cast your votes. And I think we're having problems again with...
No, there it is.
It's coming up. Okay.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now we'll consider item 8C. Mr. Clegg?
Mayor and council, given the request from a council member to pull this, I think we could proceed with the public hearing and then respond to questions.
All right, thank you. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
I'm here on behalf of Ron Froelich, Lone Palm Farms and Froelich Development. We expected this to be on consent, and so we're here and prepared to present a presentation to the City Council if one is requested. But I would just, on behalf of Froelich Development, ask that the project be approved as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to counsel for action. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in favor of this project, and I think it's a great project, and I appreciate the work that Froelich does, and I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. I did just have one question. There was, part of the resolution was amendment to the trail plan, and I got an answer from staff on that, that it was discontinuous with what the county had done. And then I had asked the question, I wanted to make sure that in the conditions that we did have, since we weren't having a trail, that we had bike lanes and the wider sidewalks, and I did not get an answer on that. So I just want to make sure that was included in the conditions, that the project does include bike lanes and the eight-foot sidewalks that are now our requirement. And with that, I would make the motion, including those conditions.
I don't see any requests to speak from the council. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and continue. We'll be back at 7:30. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is Reports 10A, Fiscal Year 2022 City Council Goals Midyear Progress Report. A staff memorandum has been received for this item, transmitting the revised goals. We have received a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence regarding this item.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Clegg, with a succinct presentation.
That is, thank you, Mayor and council. That is accurate, succinct. We always save the best for last, or perhaps we give preference to those who need to go earlier. It has, we are halfway through our fiscal year, and as we try and do, provide some update to the council. As noted with the blue memo, there's in writing a much more in-depth status update that you've received by memorandum. So this presentation really is to hit some of those highlights, and given the hour, I'll try and move quickly through our highlights. This is just a reminder of the eight council goals under which we've been operating during this current fiscal year, and I'll speak to some of the highlights. Of course, we have completed one academy this year, and we've recently begun our second academy. We've also made some important changes through civil service to have an ongoing recruitment instead of static, you know, recruitment periods, as well as made some adjustments to police and fire dispatcher recruitment. We're doing everything we can to get folks in that are qualified, but as timely as possible. Also, we've made some updates to technology that is assisting with our public safety efforts, and would note, just in light of being a mid-year report again, the accreditation accomplishment of the fire department, again, within the top 2% of fire departments within the nation. Very notable. Around homelessness, of course, we have been working since December now on the approved expansion approach, and did a lot of work leading up to that in the first half of the fiscal year. Also, we have a number of affordable housing projects to date. This is not just for this fiscal year, but we have completed 109 rental units that are affordable housing since the usage of PSVS funds, as well as, you know, another 368 units that are in process currently. And we've expanded Project Homebound to help flood ministries do this in the field, to try and connect individuals back to their homes. And a project that was taking a little bit of time to wrap up is now finally complete. The jobs program at the homeless center is completed in this last quarter. The, the jobs program at the homeless center is completed in this last quarter. Around fiscal solvency, of course, we've done a good job in getting to our reserve goals sooner than anticipated, but we've also continued to keep pace as revenues have increased and the overall city budget has increased. We're keeping track with our reserve goals there. Also, we're working towards our ERP, and, you know, we had told council initially that that was a three-to-five-year project. We're about, you know, a couple of years into the, at least the planning phases of that, and we're close to having an RFP back, and then it'll be reviewed to make a selection here in this, you know, next six months. Also, our long-range financial forecasting tool was completed and was presented to the Budget and Finance Committee. It's going to be a very important tool in our budgeting process, and we have moved forward with our legislative advocacy and adopted a state legislative program and completed our risk assessment. Around quality of life, we continue to work on parks. We've completed the design for Phase 4 at Kaiser Sports Village. The master planning process for parks is underway, that's going to be a big deal. We've included in that is the facility condition assessment for our two community centers, and Linnell Brahma Park is set to go into construction very soon. And we also completed that downtown wayfinding and streetscape study, as well as a number of other park projects. We've been pushing hard to finish out some of the CDBG projects that, that were on the books from prior years, including Beale Park and Jefferson Park. And we kicked off the 12-park playground equipment replacement cycle this fall, and the first four, as you see on the screen, are underway now, and we'll, we'll look to complete all 12 pretty close to the end of fiscal year when we push into July, August on that project. We've completed some work at the amphitheater at Riverwalk. We will be bringing forward at mid-year recommendations related to a park ranger program, and have done the homework and analysis on that over this last quarter. We've been working hard still on conservation around water, despite some, some good start to this water year. We know it's going to continue to be an issue. We've put, deployed our cleanup crews along the Parkway, and we've had four parks be adopted with our new Adopt a Park program already, and we anticipate many more to come. Around economic development, of course, we adopted our Economic Development Strategic Plan this fall, and there's a lot of work in getting ready, the implementation of that plan. Some notable ones are grants and small business loans that we're working on, as well as we'll be bringing to the council in the next month, some program changes, adjustments, enhancements for EOAs. We are also very near completion of a fiscal and economic impact model that's basically a software tool, that we can look at a project at a particular site, and it will give us a sense of how much sales tax, property tax, and other, you know, revenues would result from a project like that to help us assess which projects are going to have the biggest impact, and be an important tool, both for developers and for the city. So this is an area that's going to have a lot of energy coming forward, as we continue to work on B-3K and the implementation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. As far as infrastructure goes, very long lists here, which is good news. We've had a number of projects that have come forward, and other projects that are close, like the first one listed there, the Hosking Interchange, the design is well underway, and we look forward to bringing that forward. And I actually won't go through this entire list here tonight, but the significant investments that were made possible through the Public Safety and Vital Services tax measure, many of those take time to design, to plan, and then construct. And I think you're going to start seeing longer and longer lists of completed projects, because those funds were, you know, just made available in recent years, and we're going to start seeing that hit the ground coming forward, and, and many of the examples that are here up on the screen for you today. I would also just note, you'll see several pieces of the streetlight here. The Phase 2 is underway. The construction for Phase 1 was recently awarded, that's coming forward quickly. And then we have seen physical progress on two of our, well, on, on the Pacheco, and then about to begin the Stockdale Ranch Bike Path. And then Frank Kern, we've made good progress around the design and, and bringing forward of that project as well. It's worth noting that we have done significant training related to customer service, and that we've also been spending time sharpening the skills of city staff so we can be better public servants through trainings and skill development. And we've adopted a set of guiding principles or values that we're going to promote throughout the organization for our employees of how we do the work that we do here at the city of Bakersfield. And then we've made some important updates to that constituent referral system with even more to come. And lastly, Goal 8 around urban revitalization, we did complete our TCC planning grant. There's been a number of land use, large land use projects come forward. In my career, I've rarely seen four or five large, long-term planning projects in process at one time, but we're doing it, we're taking it on. Mr. Boyle and his team are rising to that challenge. We've got some other important work around SB 2, and that's the Affordable Housing Strategy, which will be coming to you at our next meeting, actually. We just extended the public comment period of that until the end of January, and so we delayed the report to council on that until February 2nd. As well as working on several efforts and plans around revitalization to bring forward some focus areas to spend the city's funds towards that, as well as ARPA funds towards revitalization. I ran through that fairly quickly. If there are questions on any of those elements, happy to answer those, as well as if council reads through the more detailed report, happy to follow up with you offline as well.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, thank God for the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'll keep saying it. Thank you to the voters of Bakersfield for approving Measure N. Many of these issues that we, are highlights that we discussed and saw in this presentation would not have been possible if it wasn't for the voters in 2018 making the decision to increase the sales tax. But it has been a game-changing moment for, for our community and for our city, and for the better, for, for, for really decades to come. You know, I had an opportunity to participate in the police academy graduation right before Christmas, and we graduated 25 new officers, which was really inspiring and, and encouraging. So we're headed in the right direction, there's a lot of work happening. Mr. Clegg, on behalf of this council, please extend our appreciation to all city staff for continuously pushing forward, working on all these projects, and delivering on all of our promises that we've made with Measure N. Certainly, there's more work to do, but, but, but everyone within the organization should know that the work is noticed, it's felt, and it's deeply appreciated. And let's keep, let's keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if I could get, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I'm wondering if I could get updates on Manor Street, because that, that project has been going on. I don't know, I was a little boy when it started, so. And, and on Mason Marine Park, too. I've been hearing that we're going to do that, we're going to do that, but if I could get an update on when that's really going to happen. And then lastly, you know, we went through the vision process, but really haven't heard much back from that, so if you could kind of give us an idea of what's going on, and when we'll get information from that, and what the next step's going to be, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. If I may, on that last point, I actually did follow up with our facilitator earlier today to ask about the status, and we'll have a report that's summarized into a succinct one-pager by next week. And to the, the Mason Marine item, that will be a topic of conversation in this upcoming budget process to confirm the, the final finances and funds for that project, and I'll have to follow up with you on the Manor Street.
All the time we spent in that process, in the visioning process, and now we're getting one page?
You'll get a summarized one-pager, followed with a much deeper report, but we want to hit the high points for council in, in a succinct way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple different things. On one of the slides, you had Parkway cleanup crews. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I think a council member, as part of the budget adjustments in the adopted budget this year, we allocated additional funds for the Kern River Parkway area. And if I may, just take the opportunity to speak to several of those in, in response to your question. To the cleanup crews, we hired two additional Clean City crews, and those are active crews that are out going along the multi-use path, the full length of the multi-use path east to west, and picking up litter, debris. We've actually even, within their scope of work, been able to have them assist with things like removal of shopping carts, you know, along the Kern River Bike Path and adjacent areas. We also had budgeted to hire a fourth rapid response team. We've been conducting recruitments for code enforcement officers continuously since those positions were approved, and we have not been able to fill all those positions to date. We've had two separate recruitments and not filled all those positions, so it's been a challenge getting those spots filled. It was good foresight by our Development Services Director to create the Assistant Code Enforcement Officer position as part of the budget process. We're able to bring in some folks at a more entry level and try and get them trained up and ready for code enforcement officers. That's been one of the answers to building capacity without having those positions filled. But unfortunately, today, we have not filled the fourth rapid response team. The specialized equipment or additional equipment for that team is actually due to arrive in February. With the supply chain issues, it's quicker than we expected, so that's good news. We'll have the equipment to do the work, but still trying to fill out that team. And then lastly, the flood outreach has already begun. You approved that on your council agenda on December 15th, and they were, they went to work quickly. They're already out in the river area doing outreach work as a dedicated team to that area that will be connected to that rapid response team and the Clean City teams once the rapid response team is complete.
Thank you. And then the other question, Councilmember Gonzalez had mentioned some time ago, the economic summit is coming to Bakersfield next fall, and had talked about, you know, sprucing up downtown and doing some simple things, and I haven't heard or seen a list of, of what we might be doing, and maybe mid-year's a good time to look at that, and what exactly the direction is on that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. That's consistent with my thinking, is I'll be bringing forward a recommendation to council to consider some additional dollars. We had a small amount of funds for a project in the arena lobby or convention center lobby, but I think there's an opportunity to expand that project and think a little bit bigger, to spruce up that facility, as well as spruce up downtown. We know with the timeframe in front of us, some of the larger projects may be a challenge, but, you know, maintenance and tree wells and planters and sidewalks, I'll be proposing a project that would provide some funding to get at those collectively in the downtown area ahead of that summit, to help, you know, our visitors with their perceptions of, of the city. And it's consistent with some of our other plans we've had about downtown infrastructure for some time. It's just an opportunity to bring that forward, so you'll see both of those as recommendations at the mid-year.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Is there anyone else? See no other requests to speak? Vice Mayor?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been reflecting a lot about the work we've done related to homelessness, and certainly, the city has done a lot of work to address homeless crisis over the last few years, from expanding services, building the Brundis Lane Navigation Center, and better, better coordinating with local nonprofits and county agencies by creating the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. You know, many of us have spent the last several years working behind the scenes even to build the capacity and take a real systems approach to combating homelessness, and I'm really proud of the work we've done at the local level. But even despite our best efforts as a city, it is clear that our work must continue through strategic partnerships with, with the county Behavioral Health Agency and with the state of California. I want to recognize the mayor, actually. She's done a great job representing the city of Bakersfield in various different capacities at the state level. But what, what I've been thinking about, as we've established now the homelessness ad hoc committee, really need the ad hoc committee to take a deeper look at ways in which our newly hired lobbyists can really work on our behalf in Sacramento to address the homelessness crisis and the related behavioral health challenges that our state, that our state faces. There are many cities and counties and local jurisdictions that are in Sacramento, having these conversations with the state legislator, with the governor, related to some policy choices that they've made in the past, and, and ways in which that we can improve, so that it will make our jobs a lot easier and more effective at the local level. Specifically, in, in September 2018, the state legislator adopted SB 1045, which allowed Los Angeles, San Francisco, and San Diego to pilot a conservatorship program designed to help individuals who cycle in and out of crisis, and who are incapable of, of caring for their own health and well-being due to co-occurring mental illness and substance abuse issues. That legislation was specific for those three communities. Recently, the governor has revisited the idea of modifying the, the Lanterman-Petrus Short Act. Now, for those of you who are not familiar, LPS Act, the San Diego Tribune in a recent article described it well by stating that up until the mid-1960s, it was easier to get someone institutionalized involuntarily in California. Yet concern grew over reports of poor treatment, abuse, lobotomies, and electrical shock therapy. So in response, the Lanterman-Petrus Short Act, or LPS Act, was passed by the legislator in 1967 to restrict involuntary care to people who are a threat to themselves or others, or gravely disabled, and limited how long they could be confined. That included the 72-hour hold, often called 51-50 by law enforcement, a reference to the section of the State Welfare and Institution Code. Now, currently, the county of Kern is one of 30 counties that has adopted Laura's Law, and is, and it has coordinated assistant outpatient treatment. This program has had a very good outcome to getting individuals to voluntarily accept treatment, but the law only allows outpatient supports and not medication. So there's still a subset of population out on our streets who are gravely disabled and unable to care for themselves, and could be a threat to others. Now, of course, any changes to the conservatorship laws would also require additional state resources to address inpatient bed facilities and state hospital capacity. So my point is that this is a very complex related issue, but it's one that has very, very local impacts, and it's one that I think that our council should be aware of, and we should have these conversations in Sacramento, and advocating for ourselves as the ninth largest city in the state. We should be in Sacramento weighing in on this topic. So I'd like to make a referral tonight, that the city council's ad hoc committee on homelessness explore this issue with the County of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Agency, and consider opportunities for legislation and advocacy at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And just so you know, there are conversations that the big city mayors have regularly with the governor and his staff on this topic, and we bring up conservatorship very, very frequently. It's extremely complex, and there are, people are very well aware now of that something else-- that something else needs to be done in terms of mental health and substance abuse. And I know there is a group actively working towards that. And it'll be very helpful for all of us to continue to lend our voice.
Absolutely. Thank you again, Mayor, for, for your leadership and representing us well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Seeing none? We are adjourned at 7:53.